Over there.
I'm parked because I have an event right after this. It's called multitasking. Millennials on the move.
So efficient.
All right, we're live.
Aye, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
Also, member Bowman.
Here.
Council member Farrelotto.
Here.
Also, member Galumbek.
Here.
Also, member Noakowski.
Here.
Also, President Pridgen.
Here.
Majority Leader Rivera. President Pro temp Scanlon.
Present.
Council member Wingo.
Present.
Also, member Wyatt.
Here.
Coram is present.
From the top, from the top.
Item number one, call for special session.
Motion to receive and file.
And my council member Bowman.
Item number two, amended council rules for 2020, 2021.
Motion to adopt as amended.
Question.
To remember Noakowski.
Question.
Question, council member Wingo, you had a floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it. Malcolm, if you possibly could, help me to share my screen with everyone. We are amending the rules for a position that we have described for something that has already been filled by the common council. So Malcolm, if you allow me to share my screen, Jim, whoever.
Yes, sir, you've been made a co-host, you now have shared screening capabilities.
Okay. If everyone can see that screen here, the rules are specifically to ask that we hire an individual who is to analyze public complex policy issues. However, we already have this document from the Department of Human Resources for the city of Buffalo. And this document said that the Chief of Staff is the head of the council's central staff and responsible for all matters of staff support for the council. The Chiefs of Staff performs a variety of professional level duties involved in the research and analysis of complex municipal policy issues for the common council. The Chief of Staff also serves as a communication and policy liaison between the council, the mayor's office, city departments, governmental agencies, and the general public. Then it says the Chief of Staff first and foremost is responsible for this. Research and analyze complex public policy issues and prepare reports accordingly to provide the council with information and policy analysis necessary for the proper conduct of legislative business. The position that we have described as the attorney is already filled. If we're going to hire an attorney, respectfully, Mr. Chair, I think that we should adjust the language so that it is not clearly redundant with what we have here as relates to the policy advisor here under the rules, which says the common council may hire a policy advisor whose sole purpose and function shall be to evaluate proposed policy initiatives and make recommendations for the common council and its members. Now, to me, this position is already filled. I was under the impression that this person would be giving us legal advice and not just giving us evaluations on proposed policy initiatives. Mr. Chair, I do believe that this is a position that we could tremendously benefit from if we did not rush and change our rules so that it worded or read as something that was redundant. I respectfully submit to you that we should, and I will vote on an amendment to this policy advisor, if we could possibly change the language so that it is consistent with every other support staff that we have in common council or central staff, which is to say just plainly that everyone in council staff should report to the Chief of Staff, being that is his job or her job. And also that this person's responsibility, purpose, and function should be to provide the common council with legal advice. However, that can be worded, whereas we're not usurping the authority of the corporation council, because anything that they recommend to us legally or otherwise still has to be brought back to the corporation council and put into form. So, sir, respectfully, I would vote, I will vote for this if we could just please amend the wordage for the function and the purpose of this to be very clear that this individual is going to give us legal advice, therefore kind of justifying the minimum requirement of holding a Juris Doctorate degree. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments. At the redundancy of how this is written, I'm rather secure with because it means we have several people then, for instance, like in the controller's office, there's not one accountant. So you have several people then who could help with the advice of policy. I'll be clear. This was the language that was written by our corporation council and amended by me to ensure that it would be someone with a law degree. By having that, it does not take away, and obviously, one of the reasons we want this position is to have someone who could legally advise us. We have been advised by corporation council that they couldn't represent us in court. Well, that the job of representing the council in court would be corporation council. So I totally understand and hear your comments. If we even, let's say for instance, were to strike from the Chief of Staff's job, the analyzing portion, in the meantime, we would have absolutely no one. So this is what I offer. I appreciate the offering, the change of language, that once we have filled that position, we can relook at what those titles say to better reflect once that position is filled. But until we fill that position, the Chief of Staff would have to continue doing that. So I really have no problem, council member Wingo, of looking back at that once we've filled the position and adjusting the language.
Okay, I appreciate that. The second question that I had for today regarding this position is the hierarchical structure for this position, because it is being hired through the central staff. My concern is this individual will need to report to the Chief of Staff as the job description clearly denotes that this individual, the Chief of Staff, will have direct supervision over the support staff for the common council. And as a council member, any of us can go to any central staffer and request anything. However, with the specificity behind this particular position regarding its purpose, I'm afraid that this person may not have enough work for the description that we've written. And again, respectfully, I really appreciate the fact that we are looking out for ourselves regarding matters of legality, so that there are no, quote unquote, to my colleague Mitch, Councilmember Noakowski's point, no missteps, that is appreciated. But this individual, should they be hired, you know, under central staff, should report to the Chief of Staff and central staff, that way, of course, there is no breaking of the chain of command, so to speak.
So again, one thing that I offer is that the big, the overall purpose of today is to just establish the position. I have talked to several council members who have differing opinions, but I will work with all of the council members to figure out who the person would report to. I think that once we hire an attorney, in order to get an attorney to come to work for the council, they may want a different reporting mechanism or flow, and I'm not against that. I'm not against tweaking this to make it better. So I want to be very clear that if you have council members, a majority will say, hey, we want them to be, want the attorney to report directly to the council president or to council leadership, I'm okay with that. So publicly say that, Councilmember Wingo, and I have absolutely no problem as we move toward that attorney, and thank you for your support on that and in saying that you do understand why. So with that, I will be open to making any adjustments. As a matter of fact, I talked to someone from leadership within the last couple of days to say, we need, we may have to look at that piece and so that we make sure, first of all, that we have an attorney that's not just kind of being told by everybody, we need this, we need that. I think that this attorney will have a lot of work. We have a, we have a great deal of legislation that we are trying to move forward, I think especially with things changing so quickly around us that they will, they will earn their keep. But I am very, very open to that discussion of saying, where do they report? Any, anything else? Anyone? Councilmember Wingo, are you finished? Or you still have the floor?
Oh, no, I think you've answered my question. I'm just pleased to know that we are going to continue to refine and modify this job description as it moves forward so that there isn't any confusion in our internal office, because I really do believe in chain of command, I really do believe in hierarchical structure, I do believe that your master's degree is in organizational development. So I know that organizational leadership, so I do know that you understand the importance of making sure that there is a clear line of communication and making sure that the morale is not deter, deteriorated by or eroded because someone is coming in. But I think this is going to come up a little bit later, and I don't want to spend any more time, because I know I've seen my colleague Galumbek's hand up. But we are, like you said in previous meetings, this position is no longer connected to that title that we have in our budget for the common council, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Member Galumbek.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a question that sort of piggybacks on what Councilmember Wingo mentioned. The job title that we have in the current budget for the lawyer, since we're, and my recommendation for a compromise by filling the position with the future position was so that we could eliminate this position and the salary from this year's budget. I'd just like to know where we are on that, if we are still planning on, rather than hiring a new person, filling that position by attrition, and if we are going to then eliminate that $90,000 title from this year's budget.
Yes, Councilmember Galumbek, we've stayed true to that. That was part of the compromise, that we would not, there would be no termination, there would be no removal of any current staff member, but that it would be filled through attrition.
And that we are getting rid of that position that we have added this year in the budget?
I'm not saying, we just added it to the, yeah, to, for an extra position, exactly.
Okay, all right, okay, just wanted to make sure, I'm willing, I would vote yes on it with that understanding. Thank you.
Great. And Councilmember Wingo, I just went back, I had somebody pull up what the rule looks like, and it doesn't say, from what I'm looking at, it, Rule 45 doesn't say it will report to council staff at this point. It doesn't have any reporting. So it'll, we have that door open to make sure we have the proper reporting.
Yeah, so, no, 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 you're right. I don't think I suggested that they
Got it.
Wouldn't, it was that it's just so kind of broad right now, and the specificity of just the sole purpose of this role right now, it says the purpose and function shall be to evaluate proposed policy initiatives. That is very specific, and of course, with the current structure of this position and with them being a JD, I just want to make sure that we're maintaining the integrity of the hierarchical structure in that office, since they will be coming in through attrition of central staff. So that means they are going to fill a position that is subordinate to the Chief of Staff, which means they will be a direct report to whomever the Chief of Staff appoints to be their direct report, should that person not be the Chief of Staff themselves. But that is clear. And that this position is not in the budget for this year.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, majority lead.
Motion stands to adopt the rules as amended.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt. And next.
Item number three, extension of council's decision on mayor's 2020-21 recommended budget.
Motion to adopt the extension.
Question.
Second by Councilmember, second by Councilmember Noakowski, Councilmember Wingo, you had a.
I was trying to question before we, we went to the vote, but it's okay, because I, so, okay. So, Mr. Chair, this, this, this extension here regarding the budget, of course, I've got phone calls and messages from my constituents in my district who would like for me to not vote to extend the budget for various reasons. So I believe I've already expressed why I believe that we should not extend the budget. But I do have one question regarding the extension of this budget. What difference would it, what differences would the people of the city of Buffalo incur? Should we extend this budget from tomorrow then to June 6?
I can explain it to you the way I have explained it to people, so that, I'm just going to repeat what I've said to people to get them to understand what my feeling is. So it's not, I'm not trying to do a civics lesson or be.
Oh, I got you. You're good, you're good.
No, I put it to the same way of my own household budget. And if I needed to set a budget for coming up in the next year, and I know that I have a possible job on the way, that someone says, you're going to possibly have more money, and I want to buy a house, but I, I don't know whether I've got the job yet. Nothing in writing, nothing has been approved from the mortgage company, I just know they say it should be coming soon. I probably wouldn't go to buy that house if I could have time. Now, what would be the difference, and this is the question that I want to, want to answer quickly. What would be the difference if we get nothing from, hear nothing from the federal government come June 6? Well, this is the difference. The difference is by June 6, we have at least waited to be able to see will we get 65 million and will there be casino money or will there not? So then we're able to make some more decisions. By June 6, and there's no executive order, this council, we have to make a decision, there will be no choice. But the difference will be from what we were told from the commissioner, Donna Estridge, was that if we wait until, I mean, first of all, the administration on our public calls said nothing or the representatives about this would send the city into a spiral, this is going to cause layoffs, and we asked, it's on the record. They said, we can hold up if we had to to June. After July, what we were told, at least in public, was that the terms of the loan would be different if we did it after July. So the reason I would be, if we heard absolutely nothing, if nothing changed, that we would come back to the table before July, I mean, before June 6, would be because we'd be homeless, basically, is how I equate it. Then you have to make some different types of decisions. The second thing and final for me is that the same way that right now, the administration isn't doing a loan package because they're waiting, they're not, they're not releasing the, what they would do if the money doesn't come in, because they're waiting. So the administration is in a waiting period, and I want to be clear, I think almost all council members, I can't speak for all council members, but we generally agree that the budget is very conservative. I don't see like, I don't want to cut anything out of the budget, I don't want to cut out anything, because it is very, very conservative. Personally, I think it's a, it's a good budget. However, I don't, I wouldn't get a mortgage based on a verbal, we may get some money. And so that, that, that's kind of the difference for me personally.
Okay, I completely understand everything you've just, you know, kind of intimated over these last several days that we've been in these sessions and these meetings. So essentially, whether we wait or not, just, you know, humor me, our response will be the same, whether we get the 65 million or, or now or later. I mean, if we don't get it now, or if we don't get it later, our response will be the same. Because essentially, we are, and I forget which council member had, I think, I believe it was Councilmember Galumbek had said earlier, how we are, for lack of a better phrase, kind of picking and choosing which hole in the budget we want to focus on, just so that we have an excuse to kick can down the road. If we don't get this $65 million, we're going to enact the mayor's contingency plan. If we do get the $65 million, then we're fine. But I guess my point is whether they give us the $65 million now or later, we're going to have the same budget. And whether they don't give us the $65 million now or later, we've got the same contingency plan. So I don't understand why we have to push off voting on the budget now and basically prolong the inevitable, when all of our responses are going to be the same over the course of a few days. If we get the money, we're going to do what we're going to do. If we get the money later, we're going to do what we're going to do. If we don't get the money, we have a plan now or we have a plan if we don't get the money later. So I guess that's my point, and that is my point of contention, and that is my frustration with this budget vote being extended, because it feels to me like I don't want to have to stress over this any longer than I have to. I believe that the people of my district are concerned, they don't want to have the stress over this much longer than we have to. And I, I just, I particularly believe that we, we're just, you know, kind of pushing a rope on this one. That's just my personal opinion.
And I appreciate it, and I hear you. I want to do, I do want to say that it does not necessarily mean that it's going to be the same budget. I was reminded yesterday that the council has the opportunity to cut a budget. So it does not mean, if the federal government came out tomorrow and said, we're giving you 60 million and we're $5 million short, then it would not be the same budget. It would probably be, we'd probably reduce by $5 million. We would have to work with the administration. The second thing is, when we talk about the contingency plan, I want to be clear. I don't know what the contingency plan is, so I'm not going to pretend that I would go with the mayor's contingency plan. What we have been told in one hearing after another, we have a contingency plan. But never, and I agree with Councilmember Galumbek, I don't expect for them to tell me the contingency plan in public, but I don't know what that contingency plan is, and I may disagree with that contingency plan. So I would not blindly lean on a contingency plan that I'm told is there and that I understand why it's not being shared. Unfortunately, you know, I don't want to stress over the budget, but stress is a part of this job. And over these 10 years, I've stressed many nights, and I would love to be done with the budget today. I would love to be able to vote, but personally, and this is personally, I can't leave my children and grandchildren with a bunch of debt that I didn't take my time to try to figure out. Do we go into debt? If this money does not come in, do we make cuts? That's a decision I think we have to take our time. So at the end of the day, for instance, I want my constituents to know that I, that I stressed out, that I worked hard, that, that at the end of the day, I turned over every rock, looked under every can to see how we could make it through with either the 65 million or not. And I appreciate the question, because it gives me the opportunity to answer it. So there are, there are times we qualify something that's kicking it down the road when it is actually just waiting for it to be the best that it could be for our constituents. So it doesn't mean that the budget would be the same.
So you, you've said it, and we've all said it, basically, that the common council has the ability to cut the budget. All right, so we have to face the reality that we're going to have to cut the budget, should we not get this $65 million. We have to face that reality. The mayor has laid out the basic premise of his contingency plan, but we've not laid out the basic premise of the council's contingency plan. And what I'm particularly asking is what are we doing to ensure that there is a plan in place for us? Now, he may not publish hit the specifics of his plan, because it may involve laying off, and I understand that. I get not disclosing what's going to be the specifics of his plan, because then you'll have folks going crazy on whether or not their job is next. I get that, but there will be cuts, should we not get the 65 million. Now, the common council, we've, we've, we have to deliberate, we have to discuss and, and, and talk about and share with each other on different measures that we can take to help mitigate the inevitable, which is we're going to have to make some cuts, one way or the other. And again, too, I, I, I get what you're saying regarding your personal budget, and I understand that. But I particularly believe, me, okay, I'm going to say this personally. I believe that the common council needs to be the leaders that we were elected to be and show the people that we are willing to make these cuts. Not willing, I'm sorry, let me amend that statement, not willing to make these cuts, but we are willing to do what's necessary. Even though it may not feel good, we're willing to do what's necessary, including and ensuring that this $95,000 that we have in our budget for this attorney that we're not going to hire right now, but we're going to hire through attrition, that needs to basically disappear, because at the end of the day, we can hire anyone we want to hire. We can give them any in-house title we want to give them, and we can give them any salary we want to give them. But we first must wait through attrition. That means that we are trying to secure the people that we have, and then once someone should leave or be invited to leave, then we will then put someone in that position. That, I believe, is very, very responsible, but this number that we have in our budget should not be there. And I know I'm probably making a lot of my colleagues upset, and let me just apologize to you all right now. I, I, I'm sorry, guys, I'm sorry. But I think it needs to be said that the common council's budget needs to stay right where it was and not increase anything. This position that we have in our central staff for $94,900 needs to be taken out completely and not dispersed in another place, not, not put in another line. We need to show leadership as well. We all need that money for our constituents and for our initiatives from our constituents and our various organizations. We can use that money. But family, colleagues, we have to make sure that we're being responsible and being leaders by showing that, listen, we're willing to give this up. Let's get ready to make these cuts, let's the common council have a plan, and then we can move forward. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I took too much time, but I appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
No, I, I hear you, and that will be a decision of the council when we have the budget in front of us. What is before us right now, and I'll come to Councilmember Galumbek and then Revere, what before, what is before us right now is the extension. And I'll be clear, is that as we get to those points, you know, some wanted to go back into their communities that have suffered that, where we're buying PPEs for people, and that's going to be a decision of the majority of council members where that 90 goes. There are other things, Councilmember, as you know, that council members have asked for, that if we're going to be the example, we may have to look at that, raises for staff and other things, those are also additions. And when we're talking the difference between $90,000 that we have worked together to say it won't go toward a salary in this time, we're, we're still not dealing, I want to make sure that the bigger picture is $65 million over the $90,000. Because as a council, if, if you want to strike the 90,000, you have the opportunity, I did send out a email to everybody asking them what they wanted. Anybody could have said, I want to cut $65 million from the budget now. And if five council members said, we want to cut today $65 million out of the budget, I would have entertained that request. I did not get that request. So what is before us right now is the extension. Councilmember Galumbek.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess my question, uh, main question is, I, I, I'm opposed to extending the, uh, budget deadline, um, and part of the reason is this. I have not received any information that the federal government is going to vote on a stimulus package, you know, in the next week or two. Um, the information that I've been given is, is that there will eventually be a vote, but they don't really know when. Um, if we knew that the vote was gonna come well before the June sixth new deadline, because my understanding is, is that we can't extend the budget beyond that because we have to print out our tax bills and uh, such for the, uh, new fiscal year, which begins on July the first. Um, you know, I'm gonna vote no on extending the budget because I simply would prefer that we know exactly what our budget proposal is. I would like our federal representatives to be able to go in and say, look at this, here's the city of Buffalo's budget. It's a slight increase over last year. Um, the hole in the budget that the city of Buffalo needs help with has not been caused by fiscal mismanagement. Um, I saw some things on, uh, uh, social media over the past week uh, where people misunderstood the deficit, the twenty-five, fifteen, thirty-five, whatever that number is, because it's fluid. Um, but, you know, it, back in January, we were expecting a three to seven million dollar uh, budget surplus at that point. And then this, uh, COVID crisis hit, and now we're facing a deficit this fiscal year, and we're facing a problem next fiscal year. And I wanna reiterate that that is not because we have fiscally mismanaged, you know, any of us, the administration, uh, the council, et cetera. It is simply because of the crisis, the lack of sales tax, uh, the lack of revenues coming into the city of Buffalo. Um, I would like to vote on this budget and be able to give our, uh, representatives that are going back to Washington DC in the Senate and the Congress a hard number, so that they would be able to take a look at it, so they would be able to know exactly what we need in our budget. Um, I think that if they go back now, they can say, well, the city's planning on having a budget of such and such, um, but they didn't vote on it because they wanna wait for us, um, because they can make cuts allegedly. Um, you know, I don't trust some of the people in Washington DC. I, I don't trust a lot of the people in Washington DC. I'm afraid that by not passing the budget that we send them mixed message that, you know, oh, well, we can make these cuts. Uh, the reality of the situation is, is that if we have to make sixty-five million dollars worth of cuts in the upcoming budget, it's going to be catastrophic. Um, I was here twelve, fourteen years ago, whenever it was, when we had the horrible fiscal meltdown. We had to lay off bodies. Uh, we are still, you know, at the tail end of, uh, having, uh, morale issues in some of the departments, police and fire, who had to go years without a raise. Um, city employees who had to go years without raises. Um, and finally, we're starting to build back our momentum and something that is beyond the control of any of the council members, any of the administration, the mayor, you know, anybody in the city of Buffalo. Um, my vote is going to be no on extending this. I would rather just vote on it, have the budget taken care of. And then if we find out that those monies are not available, then comes the contingency plan for us with the council and the clerk's office, um, for the mayor's office, uh, although I am, uh, in agreement with, uh, Mr. Wingo, and I'm glad that, uh, it appears that we're gonna get rid of that one position and save ninety thousand dollars to bring our budget back more in line with what it was last year. Thank you.
Thank you, council members, I'm sorry, Councilmember Revere and then Scan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just wanna go to the origin of this. Um, this pause was, um, issued by the governor because of the condol, um, like COVID, um, nineteen. And the pause that he allows us to do this, and we're pausing as well. He allowed us to make this pause. Other municipalities, other states, other cities are delaying their municipal budget for the same reason that we're doing it. They're doing it for the same reason that we're doing. They're being responsible. Um, we're talking about leading, uh, leadership does lead, and I believe that this council is leading right now. We're not just following, we're just not going along. We're actually leading, we're taking some time. These are extraordinary times that we're working with. This is unprecedented. So this council has said, hey, let's take this time for a number of reasons. One, we can wait on our federal representative to give us more assurance what direction they're going. Secondly, it gives us an opportunity to work with this administration. That is what we wanna do. We wanna work with them. Let's talk internally, within leadership, within committee, internally about the contingency plans. I wanna know what some of these contingency plans are. Up to this point, all we heard from various department is that there is a contingency plan. However, this common council, this, um, leadership does not know exactly what those contingency plans are. So we wanna work in these ten days, and I can't tell you for sure. Uh, we've talked to state representatives, our Schumer's chief of staff. He couldn't give us with all certainty what's gonna happen. It, it, as far as our budget, um, he was asked point blank. Um, would having a budget, uh, somehow, um, help things or not help things? Having a document with that help things? And he said, you know, that's, I, I can't tell with all certainty, fifty, fifty percent. I, it'd be a gap. That is what our federal representative, this budget, delaying it by fourteen days is not gonna cut a job, is not gonna lay off a person. It's gonna give us some time to have a little more certainty about where the government is heading or what these contingency plans are. I think that this common council is leading right now. We're just not following. We're ju- we're actually leading, and I applaud you for this, and those common council members that support the extension. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Scan. You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Good morning. Thank you, Council President. Good morning, gentlemen, um. These are very uncertain times. You know, none of us has ever been through a situation like the one before us today. Uh, we have a global pandemic that has brought to our doorstep the possibility, should we not receive any federal assistance, that we would need to make drastic changes to the operations of the city of Buffalo, including furloughs, layoffs, cuts, programming, borrowing, et cetera. As a result, we have a decision before us today. And that decision's not whether we vote to delay a decision on the budget or not. In my opinion, it's a decision of whether or not we take action during a time of crisis. We're all aware that should the federal government not provide us direct federal assistance, we're gonna have an enormous gap in next year's budget. The number we've been referencing is sixty-five million dollars, but let's be honest, none of us know what that number is exactly gonna be. None of us has a crystal ball that can predict exactly what's gonna happen in the future, what sort of revenues we will or will not bring in, or whether or not there'll be a second wave of this virus, which could possibly cripple us further. We, so we can all agree that we have, as of right now, a major hole in next year's budget as a result of this health crisis. So we need to act. Other areas of this country that are hit with natural disasters do not sit back and cross their fingers and hope that help will come. They say to the federal government, this is what we need. They start billing FEMA. They start doing things like that, saying, these are the holes we have. Our people are being harmed. We need you to step in and help us. Um, so here we sit with a sixty-five million dollar hole. And what are we debating doing? We're debating holding off on asking for that assistance. If we all agree that we're gonna need this funding, what is the mechanism through which we are asking? What is the formal document indicating to our congressional delegation into Washington DC that we need help? An adopted budget showing sixty, a sixty-five million dollar gap, which will negatively impact the operations of the city of Buffalo, and most importantly, the people of the city of Buffalo, is that mechanism through which we can wave our flag saying that we need help? Now, late yesterday afternoon, um, I joined you, Council President, the Majority Leader, and some members of the administration on a phone call with Martin Brennan, the chief of staff of Senator Chuck Schumer. Now, this is the chief of staff of the minority leader of the United States Senate, the highest ranking Democrat in the US Senate. Mr. Brennan made a couple of things very clear. The first being that a decision on a next round of stimulus, a stimulus, um, coming in the next two weeks was far-fetched. And that negotiations were just getting underway. What he did say, and I found extremely reassuring, was that Steve Mnuchin, the Secretary of the Treasury, has been, um, a great partner throughout this ordeal with them negotiating, and said that he sees something getting done for our local municipalities in the next package. Now, the, the two weeks that I referenced coincides with the end of the New York State pause orders, a date with which, uh, which several of the council members would like to use in this resolution references as a drop dead date for us to move on the budget. And I've heard several members of the council who are in favor of extending the deadline, say at that point on June sixth, they would move to approve the budget for a litany of reasons. My question is, if the minority leader of the United States Senate doesn't see a resolution to the stimulus negotiations by that date, what is the point of extending? We're just gonna be arriving in the same place in two weeks, especially when we have other high-ranking officials in federal government, even from the Republican side, saying they're working toward and indicating they will get something done in the long term. The other thing Mr. Brennan made clear, and he said this was absolutely key to getting something done, was to applying pressure to our federal representation. He said it is critical that we create a sense of urgency and to show how things are gonna impact municipalities, in particular on the human side of things. He said we need to use any connections we have, any relationships we have, and any other conduits we may have to create that sense of urgency. So I say, how better to create a sense of urgency than to show the human side of this pande- and to show the human side of this pandemic, than to adopt a budget which makes it abundantly clear to our congressional representation that the city of Buffalo is absolutely and the people of the city of Buffalo are gonna absolutely be harmed if we do not receive assistance from the federal government. Programs will be cut, people will be, be laid off. We all know the other issues that would take place during some sort of contingency plan. So this is the way we can create that sense of urgency and that conduit and that mechanism through which we can ask for that funding. Um, I believe that punting on this today down the road for two weeks and holding our hands and waiting for someone from outside of the city of Buffalo to come to our rescue without taking any decisive action on our part here on the ground is, is kind of irresponsible. So for, I, and I, you know, I've heard other things come up about, um, the governor extending pause orders and things like that, but you know, the New York State Governor didn't sit and wait to, and to present his budget, the county legislature, or the state legislature did not wait to approve the state budget. No, they, they were decisive. They decided to move forward, saying, this is the money we need to operate so that New York government and New Yorkers are not harmed. And I think we should be doing the exact same thing in Buffalo, taking decisive action and applying the pressure to our federal representation and saying, listen, we're doing our part. This is what this takes to run this city of Buffalo and to make sure that our residents that we were elected to represent are not harmed. We need you to step up and take the ball from here and get it across the goal line. So for those reasons, um, I'd vote against extending the deadline.
Thank you, sir. Um, just a couple of comments, and I'll go to Councilmember Wyatt. Um, I think there's a difference between punting and huddling. I'm not a football guy, so I, I really, I might be wrong. Um, this isn't punting the ball. This is huddling. Uh, because we don't know the play. There's, I was on the same call you were on briefly on yesterday, and I asked a question. And the question was, what would be the chief, basically, the chief thing that we could do in the city uh, in order to help our federal delegation? And you, you are right, you're right, uh, President Protump. The, the key thing he said, and the keys are what unlock the door, is the pressure on the federal government. For the time I was on, he did not, and as you said, because I didn't hear him say, he said, or someone said, I think it was Councilman Revere. Uh, you haven't adopted budget. I, I, I don't know, fifty, fifty. At the end of the day, there are some uncertainties, many. You're right. Everybody's right who says we don't know what this pandemic could do. Um, we don't, we have no idea what the future, there's certain things we cannot control. But the one thing that we can control as a legislative body, um, is utilizing the laws that are in front of us to be able to huddle. The reference or the thought of standing around, uh, twiddling our thumbs, I'm not sure who's twiddling their thumbs because we heard very clearly from our federal representatives, we need your help. We've been on calls with the administration, with the unions. Um, I continue to advocate. I've been on calls this week, not with, um, Senator Schumer's chief of staff. I was on the call with Senator Schumer last week with the Majority Leader of the state. And even in talking to the Majority Leader of the state yesterday, uh, and when she was informed of what this council might do, she actually applauded the efforts. State who will eventually, um, uh, have to weigh in on all of this also. Um, the Majority Leader of the, of the county, um, talking the same language of we may have to pause. So at the end of the day, I'm not twiddling, I'm not, this is me personally, I'm not sitting around hoping, but I will not give false hope, uh, by vote, voting on a budget that I haven't at least, uh, continued to advocate uh, for the sixty-five million or the hundred million. That's the uncertainty. Some of the bills that are, uh, right now floating around in Washington, talk about a hundred million for the city of Buffalo, which then, uh, we are in, in, in great shape, um, or better shape, I should say. But, uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not punning. I'm, I'm not leading a punt. I'm, I'm, I'm leading the huddle. Uh, Councilmember Wyatt.
President, yeah.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Scan.
Yeah, um, I just, I did play football. I'm gonna have to one-up you on the football analogy here that, and my, my fear is that if we sit here huddling, the time clock's not unlimited, and the time clock's gonna run out. And i- if two weeks from now, we just wind up in the same position, I don't understand why we're not taking action now. So it just, it, it doesn't make sense to me for us to sit here huddling for two weeks while time runs out and we sit here at the same place in two weeks and then wind up with the same play that we were going to two weeks pre- previously. So it's just where I stand.
All right, thanks. And I know you know football a lot more, but the time clock has been extended, and I didn't extend it, the governor did. Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just wanna say that we have not been twiddling our thumbs. We've been working very diligently, learning the details of the finance and the budget. We were given a budget with a seventy-six million dollar hole. Nobody said, hey, there's a contingency. We heard that there's a contingency. But I've been saying we need to be working together. We have not worked together. The administration has done what they do. They've sent their people to speak to us on doing something that we are vehemently against. And I think we're showing real leadership, not followership. We're a co-equal branch to government. We so, see a big hole, and no one has explained to us any details of what the contingency is, but there is one. But we don't know. Yesterday, as I listened to the control board's meeting, what did they say? They want more details on what the plan is for us not getting the money. Even the control board said this. So I don't think that the majority of us who are standing on extending this are on the wrong side. Some of us may just be misguided. And I'm gonna leave it at that. I think that what we're doing is responsible, not irresponsible, and it's not twiddling our thumbs, it's a standing in the point of leadership. I just got my master's in leadership, and I'm so proud of it. Because leaders lead. They are willing to negotiate, they're willing to have other conversations. But this council member has not had any conversation with the administration. However, they want our vote to do something that, to me, is somewhat irresponsible to kick the can down the road and wait till we hear something else. We know that we may have to make some decisions, some very difficult decisions. However, I think we give ourselves some time. There was an item that I put forth regarding the school zone cameras that the mayor has decided that he was gonna use this governor's pause order to not sign it. But in this case, we should not use that same opportunity. I think that that shows that there is a doubled speak, and we wanna speak clearly, and we wanna hear clearly. And it's our responsibility as elected officials, and for me, it's even more important as a finance person, that I would not support passing a budget with a seventy-six million dollar hole, knowing the other issues prior to this. Some of you may say, oh, it wasn't the pandemic that caused this problem. No, it wasn't the pandemic that caused the problem, but it was the pandemic that exposed our problems even further. So you can argue your point that it wasn't the pandemic, but it was something that we've seen all along, that we've just continued to ignore and think that we could project revenues of five hundred million dollars. And we've not, not one year since the last three years received five hundred million dollars in revenue. I've done the numbers. This is not rhetoric, it's not hearsay, it's the facts. Over the last three years, we only brought in, on average, four hundred and seventy-five million dollars. We have a problem before the pandemic, and we have a bigger problem now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sorry, I was on mute. I could hear, I just couldn't, you couldn't hear me. Anyone else? All right.
Mr. President?
Councilmember Gullumbe?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, we've been bandying about the contingency budget coming from the mayor's office. And, you know, I understand that, and I understand the concerns as to what that contingency budget is, but I'd just like to share this with my colleagues. I'm one of nine Democrats on the city council. Mr. Rivera is my Majority Leader, and I have not been called to talk, to talk to, to be explained what our contingency budget is for the council or the clerk's office. Those are the two departments that we have direct control over. And I specifically asked those questions when we had our budget hearings, and we, I did not get an answer to those questions from leadership of the council. Also, I'm a little bit disappointed, and I did share this with you, Mr. President, and I understand that part of this problem is because we have to do everything by Zoom, we have to do everything by email, by text messages, and it's not an ideal way for democracy, but I did not know that we were going to try to push the budget an extra week. I finally heard rumblings, I think I sent out that text message on Sunday, maybe, or Monday, I forget exactly when. But it had been almost a week since I had heard from anybody on the council except for Mr. Scanlon about what was going on. I had sent messages to the staff's office to find out if there were any workshops or anything that I was missing. So in my opinion, I respectfully disagree with a couple of my colleagues who say that we're not twiddling our thumbs at this point because it doesn't seem like there's been a whole heck of a lot going on for the past week, and if there is, it's being held without my involvement, and that's disappointing because, you know, I'm one of nine, I'm one of nine council members, I'm one of nine Democrats. I would expect the Majority Leader to be in direct contact with each and every one of the council members, and that has not happened. Yeah, I don't know if it's for accident or if it's been on purpose. But in certain regards, especially as Mr. Scanlon says, it does appear that, you know, we're huddling, you know, to just simply wait until June the sixth, and we're not going to know anything more June sixth than we do today. I would much rather see our federal representatives have the opportunity to say, here's the city of Buffalo's budget. This is what they need. They have a hole of sixty-five, seventy-five, whatever million dollars it is. This is the catastrophic catastrophe that is going to face the city of Buffalo. Here are the hard numbers. And let's say for the sake of argument that we did approve this budget on the twenty-second. And let's imagine that the seventy-five million dollars doesn't come through. What happens? We have to meet. We're going to have to meet. We're going to have to work with the mayor. We're going to have to work with the administration to make cuts. He's going to propose the cuts, and we're going to be sickened because we're going to have to support those cuts. So I don't see waiting the next two weeks how that is going to benefit us. You know, and that's why I specifically asked if the federal government had given us a date, if they would have said, oh, we're going to definitely know by June fifth, by May twenty-ninth. Okay, I think that there would be some real reason for wanting to extend the budget. But we have been given no commitment, and as a matter of fact, we've basically been told that there most likely will not be a vote by June the sixth. So I think that, you know, waiting this extra two weeks is, is foolish on our, on our part. I'd rather give our federal representatives the hard numbers, what we need so that they can go to Washington DC and fight for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are, we will give them the hard numbers of what has been proposed, and, and we'll move forward. At the end of the day, there hasn't, okay, I'll go to, when I finish this statement, Councilmember Bowman and then Revere. At the end of the day, there hasn't, there hasn't been any, there hasn't been any private meetings. We've made everything rather public and to have our discussions and deliberations right here in front of the public. And so you've been a part of every meeting that I've been in and that every council member on this call has been in. Councilmember Bowman?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say that I don't think extending it is irresponsible. I think it's responsible, and for a freshman lawmaker looking at this budget for their first time, it's giving me more time to look at this budget and make a more informed decision. Maybe the federal funding does not come in the next two weeks, but in budget hearings, I did ask several questions about deficit borrowing. I'd like more information on that, the current statutes. I'd like to know what the long-term fiscal impact to the city of Buffalo would be from deficit borrowing. So in these two weeks, I'll definitely be doing my due diligence to look into that and ask more questions. But from the comptroller and administration, I really haven't had answers that have made me feel comfortable of if that's our Plan B and accepting more liability. So that's another reason why, why I'm, I'm for extending this. Thank you.
And Councilmember Bowman, Councilmember Revere, and then Noakowski.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We've had a series of meetings. We had budget meetings, we had workshop meetings, we had a public meeting, we had committee meetings, we had gap sheets, we had the comptroller's response, we had the control board's response, we have finance committee meeting in between. We have shared whatever information we have with each and every council member. So I, I, I respectfully disagree with Councilmember Gullumbe, who mentioned Majority Leader by name. I think all of us have been privy to this information. And if you, you have, and it's because you haven't read the gap report, or perhaps you didn't attend the council meetings or the finance committee meetings, but we have been transparent and open as we possibly can. And, you know, it's unfortunate when we take times, opportunities to attack one another. This is not what it's about. This is about solutions, finding solutions, working together. I think we all have the same interests, and that is the residents of the city of Buffalo, our constituents. We all share the same concerns. Perhaps you want to get there in different ways, and I can respect the differences. You know, that's part of this. I respect the differences, but I will not personally attack any one council member. I think we've all been informed as best we can in the midst of a pandemic, in the midst of Zoom and everything that's been going on. So I commit myself to work these next two weeks as hard as we've already been working. We're just going to continue to work at this. We're not going to sit down and, and twiddle our thumbs and sit on the bench or huddle all these analogies. We're going to work to make sure that when we make that vote, it is based on the best information we have. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to reiterate also what Councilmember Bowman said. As freshman lawmakers, our very first budget is during a global pandemic with a sixty-five million dollar deficit, which is the money that, right now, that sixty-five million dollars is as good as Monopoly money. So if I need extra time granted by the governor of the state of New York during a global pandemic to answer questions regarding deficit borrowing, how much will we have to take out, when? More reassurance from our federal government so that I can make the best decision possible on the behalf of the Fillmore District. I believe that I am doing my due diligence and that I am acting responsibly because it has been stated during the finance committee that by extending this budget vote, which we keep saying June sixth, we could vote on this budget. This council has vast powers. We could vote on this budget and hold a special session anytime we want in between those two weeks. It does not need to be June sixth. But if we can inform and better equip our council members to make the best decision possible on the behalf of their constituents, I will be voting that way. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Yes, and I wanted, we're going to call the vote soon, so if we can, if we have any new information or any new positions, Councilmember Wingo?
I just want to ask you a, a question. I, I, I heard it quickly, but I don't know if I really heard it, that you had suggested that all nine council members were on one call regarding what we're discussing today?
No, I'm talking about all the committee meetings we've had, everything that Councilmember Revere just talked about.
Okay, because I, I
That's not what I said. I said the committee meetings.
Okay, because, all right, so that, that, that will be my comment, then I'm not going to make another comment then.
Councilmember Freirello?
Thank you very much. Just a couple of things to add on. I know there's, this certainly has the votes that it's going to be extended, so the council could vote on it between now and June sixth. I think it's important to note, I know every, a lot of people have different opinions, but that we're all in agreement that this body, this administration is together, and we're all advocating for the federal funding that the administration has put in the budget. And we're hoping that our federal representatives are advocating very strongly for us, and I think it's important, certainly important that we get the money, and essentially today, what we're voting on is the budget. Do we vote on the budget today or up until any day between now and June sixth? And I understand everyone's position on this, and hopefully, we're all hopeful that we do get the sixty-five million dollars. However, it's, I think it's important that during this time where we are waiting to, where we are waiting to take a vote on it, that we are working together, doing what we need to do to advocate for this funding, whether it's contacting our federal representatives. Because I think the budget put out is a, it's a good budget, and it does, I believe it has the plans that, A, we get the federal funding. If we don't have federal funding, then the next option would be B, would be borrowing. And then anything on top, if A and B don't work out, then doing cuts. So I think it was, I think it was laid out in what the steps would be. And I know some people talked about the contingency plans. I know we didn't get the details about them, and hopefully, we don't get to that point. However, I think we should all be working together to hope that it's, A, that we do get the federal funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Freirello. I echo your words. We must work together to get those federal funds in whatever ways and whatever influence that we have and send out a clear message that we, the city of Buffalo, does indeed need that. And one of the things that I did hear from one of the, our elected officials in Washington was that they don't think it, it will happen this week. They don't, at first we were told it was going to, there was going to be a vote Friday, but what they did say is this thing is so fluid that it really could happen quicker, depending on the deals that are made in Washington. So thank you all for your input. It has already been moved. And second, I know that Councilmember Gullumbe has asked to be recorded in the negative. I believe President Protem in the negative, and Councilmember Wingo in the negative. Any others in the negative? All right, that then would carry.
Item number four, mayor's budget recommendations for 2020, 2021.
Motion to receive and file.
Would it be received and filed or tabled?
Tabled, Council President, Majority Leader.
I'm sorry, table.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by President Protem Scanlon. Thank you all for your service.